I will call to order the regular meeting in the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, September 13, 2023. The time is 7:00 PM. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lavoy.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Scales.
Mr.
Commissioner Barry.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here, and Chairman Carmichael.
Here.
We have a quorum. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And while you're standing, gentlemen, anyone who testifies must be sworn in, so please raise your right hand, swear that any and all testimony you give before this commission will be the whole truth. Thank you. And please join me in silencing your phones and buzzers. And final reminder that anyone who testifies has to sign in at the podium or out in the hallway with their name and contact information. First item is the approval of the amendments from the August 9, 2023, regular meeting. I have a motion to approve. Mr. Thomas.
Second, Peterson.
Motion to second. Roll call, please. Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Scales. Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael. And before we really get started, at this time, we'll call for an open forum. If there's anyone here who would like to testify or make comments before this commission on any subject or issue that is not on tonight's agenda, get yourself on the record. This is your chance. Seeing none, we'll move on. Just a quick review of public hearing procedures. First, the petitioner will be introduced and present his or her petition, followed by staff comments. And after that, then the public gets to weigh in. And commissioners come last with our comments and questions. Know that we have a village attorney present with us to help us with anything that we need there. And know that once we complete a vote, that our vote is a recommendation only to the village board. Staff will schedule you to when that appears, and the village board has the final say-so on your petition. Any questions on that? Thank you. First, under old business, PCC 0242023, a request by Balsami Incorporated, the petitioner, and SCP Westmont, the owner, regarding the property at 52 East Ogden, for the following: A special use permit request for an amusement establishment in the B2 General Business District. Who would come forward on this issue? Good evening.
Um, I introduce myself and address or anything like that. Jason Sheets with Motto4 Design and Architecture. We're the architect for the project. I'm from Dayton, Ohio, and representing the Skyzone and the franchisee on the particular project. I believe you've had a chance to review the packet of information. In short, Skyzone is an amusement, an entertainment venue, trampoline park to most. It typically will go into big box stores or warehouses due to the open volume and ceiling height requirements, because there's a bunch of trampolines and a bunch of apparatus, so definitely don't want anyone catching the top when they're on the different apparatus. So there's just typical open trampolines, there's dunk ball, zip lines, foam pits, that sort of thing. And typically, they'll have a lot of birthday parties, maybe corporate events or church events, and then there's just what's called open jump. And so that's just coming in, just like you would at any other event center. All of those things are reservation-based, so they do a good job of regulating how many kids or adults are in at a given time based upon the staffing that they have, and keep a good eye on all the activity that's going on inside the park. So they offer, there is concessions, they offer food and drink, and obviously, for parties, there would be catered in food and drink or bought through the Skyzone itself. If I can answer any questions, architecturally, I'm more familiar with it as a user, because I have four kids, and the one in our own town, I've been there, I don't know how many times, between open jumps and birthday parties. So if anyone has any questions, happy to answer.
First, let's go to staff.
Thank you. So 52, the address for this property is 52 East Ogden Avenue. The space is in a multi-tenant commercial development. It's located right near the intersection of North Cass Avenue and East Ogden Avenue. The development itself holds a few different uses. The building itself has three listed spaces, 4 East Ogden, which houses the Jewel Osco, as you guys know, 52 East Ogden, which is currently vacant, and the property that Skyzone's looking to occupy, and then 80 East Ogden, which is the Micro Center location. The 52 East Ogden Avenue was previously occupied by the Hobby Lobby, and in the rear portion of the space, it was divided in the back for Jewel Osco's fulfillment center in recent history. The remaining 31,000 square feet is currently vacant, and that is the space that Skyzone's looking at occupying as well. So getting into what they're requesting, they're requesting approval for a special use permit to operate an amusement establishment within the B2 General Business District. So we've talked about the special use permit before and the special use standards they must abide by when you're looking at this use in particular. I won't go through each one, we've seen them before. But they also have a special condition. Their special condition states that such special use may be permitted, provided that no building or outdoor portion of the lot containing such use is located within 100 feet of a residency district. They've determined that they comply with that standard. And then, as they noted, their general operations for this amusement establishment is that it's mostly reservation-based. They serve kids, teens, and adults. The amusement provided for the Skyzone includes trampling, jumping activities, things like dodgeball, sports courts, and toddler areas. The petitioner expects to have six employees on site on the weekdays when there's lower capacity, and then 17 employees on the weekends when they have more of those parties and reservations. And I don't think they noted this, but I'll just try to reiterate, the hours of operation are from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday. And then on Saturday, it is 10:00 AM to, I believe, let me double-check, to 10:00 PM. And then on Sunday, it is 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM again. And obviously, their weekends, they assume they're going to have more reservations during the weekends and the weekdays. And then they also separate out those times for different age groups to utilize the amusement establishment, so they won't have toddlers and teens going at the same time. In addition to the special use permit, we also looked at their parking. Based on our code, how our current code's written, it basically states that the existing number of parking spaces that are currently provided on the property within an existing multi-tenant commercial building, which this is, in the B2 General Business District, is considered conforming to whatever use moves into there, and no variances are required if they're under that amount. However, the petitioner did provide in our packet a comparable parking study and statement for a different property that they have this use at. And they basically said that generally, they require about 2.2 to 2.8 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of the area. And this site contains 298 parking spaces that are shared between those neighboring uses in the multi-tenant building. The anticipated designated parking for this area is around 146 parking spaces, and they believe that 111 will be utilized. But they also have pickup and drop-off in the front as well. And generally, they are compliant with the municipal code and then the zoning ordinance as well. And I'm open to any questions from the commission.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make questions or comments? Yes, please, sir. Please come to the podium. We can't hear you.
Couple of quick questions. This is more to you.
First, sir, Rick.
Rick Merton from, as a local businessman.
Have you signed in?
Pardon me?
Have you signed in?
Oh, I did not. Quick question was, is there a facility or room for the buses, if you should need them to park in the lot? That was number one. I don't know if he answered that already. The other was handicap parking. And I would presume that there's enough for the 140 people that would go there.
Do you want me to chime in? So generally, because of how our code's written, we didn't have to do a survey of how many parking spaces there are. Basically, whatever use moves into there, because it's a multi-tenant space, whatever parking's currently on site is permitted. They provided that additional parking information, just to make sure there weren't any issues on their end as well. They didn't provide any outlines to where, if there were buses or anything like that, so I'd look to the commission.
Just a thought, if people are coming, they come in groups, or the school comes, or the church group goes, whatever, and the handicap, of course. You know, Grandma and Grandpa want to come to see their kids and, you know, jump and bounce and whatever they're going to do over there. The other question is, food and drinks. Are you going to have cocktails for Mom and Dad while they watch the kids, you know, jump and play and whatever? Or is there a permit they need or not served?
So to my knowledge, they are not planning on serving alcohol there. If they were to, they'd have to go through proper licensing through the village, through the liquor commissioner and everything like that. And I would look to John for any further information on that.
But, Rick, you're asking food and drinks in general, not alcohol, is that correct?
Well, no, I'm sliding it over. Well, let's make a food and drink along with the alcohol, all right? And that just brought me up, a thought came to mind. Do you have any facilities to do a little gambling while you're watching the kids?
I believe you have to have a liquor license to have gambling, is that not correct?
That's correct.
So that would...
Okay. Again, just some thoughts that, you know, come into mind while you're sitting there watching the kids. You know, Grandma will watch the kid, and Grandpa will go over and do the slots a little bit, and that's good for the village. You know, not that I want you to do that, but anyways, those were a couple of thoughts that came to my mind. All right? I'll sign in and bring it back.
Okay, thank you, Rick. And is food, at these, your other locations...
There is food and drink, there is not alcohol.
All right.
And again, it was, I mean, food and drink, you're talking about snacks, chips, pizza, nachos, that kind of thing. And on parking, yeah, existing parking's in place as part of our process for building permits and building plan review, that's always a check line for us to make sure that meets code, meets actual ADA, ADAC code. So that's always part of the documentation process. As far as buses, it's a good question. There's not dedicated bus parking. I think when, just from the ones I've been at, if there is a bus scenario, it is a drop-off, and then bus pulls away. If not, it'd be, typically, I would think they would park in the far corner as to not disrupt. But a lot of it is minivans and SUVs with a trunkload, and so there's probably six, seven, anywhere from, let's say, three to six kids or people per car. So, I mean, it's not, that's, the piece about the 2.2 to 2.8 historically across the country falls in line, just because it's usually not drivers on a one-to-one basis going into the park.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? I think we can go to the, sir, if you want to stay at the podium, we'll start shooting at you now. Chris, would you like to start? Commissioner Lavoy?
Oh, sure. I just have a couple of questions. I'll start with staff. Has there been any objections received from neighboring property owners?
We have, I've gotten no inquiries on this particular use from the general product. We did send out mailings, and then we also had a sign posted as well.
The only reason why I ask is because this parcel this sits on is a separate parcel to Jewel, which is right next door. So I was really curious to see if there's crossover, if people are going to park over on the other side, just because it's closer to the front door, if Jewel has any objections or not. But if they have not raised any concerns, it's not a concern of mine, for sure.
Not that I know of.
It's just not a separate parcel. Is there any kind of crossover parking agreement?
There is. I don't know if there's an agreement in place. I know for Micro Center and this property, 52 East, there is shared parking. But for Jewel, I don't know if there's cross-access agreement. I would assume so, but we'd have to double-check. Their parking count, obviously, is permitted based on the existing use, so we didn't have to look into that, that particular situation.
Commissioner Lavoy, I just want to chime in. I think the only inquiries I saw were because the petitioner's corporation or LLC didn't specifically state Skyzone. We had a few inquiries of, who is that?
I see.
Like, what is the name of the business? And then as soon as they learned that it was Skyzone, the questions typically stopped there.
Got it. And I would assume, Joe, since you've chimed in, that, I didn't see any signage requests here, so, you know, I'd like to mention it, because if there's something outside the code, you'd have to come back. But I would assume that the answer is that you would meet that code, is that correct?
It gets a lot easier for us if we meet the code up front. Yeah, they have a national sign vendor that coordinates that submittal and local jurisdictional requirements.
Okay. Is there any noise attenuation required?
From Skyzone?
Your space, your operations to the neighboring property.
I don't know if it stipulates, currently in the zoning code, typically walls are insulated, sound attenuation for that reason, coming and going.
Okay. But no further questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you. The food and drink, do they have, like at the bowling alley, they have a concession?
Yes.
Okay. It's not vending machines or anything?
It is not. It's counter layout. I think it's probably, might be hard to see in the floor plan, but it is staffed and counter service. There's lockers. I wonder if they're, it might be up to the franchisees if they want to put in vending, but I believe, I haven't seen vending at the ones I've been at, and we don't necessarily space plan for it.
How many of there are these?
Across the country?
Yeah.
That one's, we've done a dozen, 15 of them. I bet there's 100 of these. I think in the greater Chicago area and suburban area, there might be three currently.
Okay. I know we don't have anything like that here, and I think it's an awesome idea. I think it's going to be great. Unfortunately, my kids are all grown up, but, and the location is good. I can't really think of anywhere else in town where this would fit in, you know, very well, I think. You did mention, though, you said something about pickup and drop-off zones. Is that going to be like a marked area right in front, or how does it? The only reason I'm asking is because I go to Micro Center and I go to Jewel, and people are kind of crazy in that parking lot. And that stop sign right there, I know people blow that stop sign all the time. So how is that?
The ones we've done so far, it's not been, unless they own the parcel, the franchisee or the Skyzone corporate, it's just worked out with either local zoning or the center owner. So sometimes it's parking spaces, you know, drop-off. Most of the time, it's literally just like drop-off at school, like, okay, get out, I want an hour to myself. And they just pull off. It's not a big production.
But I mean, is there signage that's going to be either right in front of the building, or is there...
I don't think on this one, we have anything designated as like, you know, like a true painted area zone. Just because of the nature of that drive, you don't want to interrupt, just as you're saying, interrupt that traffic. We can't, other than, like, you'd be dropping someone off at the grocery and going and parking, that sort of thing. It is not a production sort of drop-off zone.
What is the typical amount of time? I think the last time I was in that unit was when it was the Halloween store, last year, maybe? You know, and it is all, how long does it normally take? Or when are they planning on opening?
To build out and...
Yeah, how long does it take to build it? Do you know?
I do. I don't know if they've set a date. Typically, the construction cycle is anywhere from three to six months. So imagine, I mean, it is kind of just a, it's a big box, right? Big open box, and treat the different stations or apparatus as essentially fixtures or furniture. They're just really big. So those all come from corporate. You know, that order is placed, and they assemble and get everything together, so it's coordinating moving that stuff in. Most of the actual, it's very limited construction. You know, it's just sort of the vending area and the restrooms and a few other walls, like administrative walls. Everything else is fixtures that are pre-manufactured and then assembled on site.
I think that's all I have left, Sam. I'm looking forward to this, being in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
I think it's a good fit. Parking, there's enough there, space, you have all you need. The building is made for it, which is probably why you chose it. I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Barry?
One thing about going towards the end is everything gets covered, so, you know, I agree with Jill that there's, you know, there's a lot of activity up there already. So it appears to me that there's no, and this is more for staff, I guess, there's no in or out off of Ogden for that particular parking?
I think there might be...
There is one at the far east corner of the lot.
Right in between the Jewel Osco and this property, if you go straight south.
I believe over, I'm sorry to interrupt, I believe by the bank on the east side, there's one...
On the drawing of the yellow area, that's their parking. Is there no, there's no entrance off of Ogden? Is that the way I'm to understand that?
Not directly off their park...
Not straight into the parking lot.
Yeah, not directly off their parcel, so they'd have to come in on the neighboring parcel to reach their parking lot.
I assume, like I would or most of us would, that they're going to use what appears to be Jewel's road?
Yeah, I would assume there's a cross-access agreement.
Because that's where the light is?
Jewel has one with multiple properties, so...
And so forth?
Yeah. And that's usually looked at by, when they come through permitting, if they're doing a restriping or something like that.
Okay. Because I like to, I shop up there, and I noticed that that, I was just there Sunday, and it really, that road is in really disrepair there, and so with increased traffic, and I thought, the question earlier, that there is no agreement between the two parking lots here, is that...
There should be. I didn't check it through my research. Usually, when they come in for a restriping permit, the engineer looks to see that there's an agreement in place, just to make sure they're not restriping.
Because it seems to me the primary access is going to be on Jewel's, with no Ogden Avenue entrance, and that Banco, or, it's not Banco Popular, this is an old, this is not here, but closer to the bank, I think just most people would use the light there to enter that, especially if you're not from the area, I would assume.
Yeah, I believe the bank that's there is Old National currently.
Commissioner Barry, and I'm only going off memory, so it may be inaccurate.
I've never researched the cross-parking and cross-access on this, where the traffic light is, which is technically on Jewel's property. However, we have done extensive research where the Greek restaurant is over Taste, which also shares off Jewel's property. And my memory from that is there are easements, but not necessarily cross-parking, cross-access agreements. And the difference is, is the easements allow the customers to come and go and trucks to come and go, but it doesn't guarantee Jewel any ability to recoup the cost of shared maintenance or anything like that. Jewel has always just owned and maintained. And this is how the shopping, I mean, back in the day, the shopping center developed, it kind of predates the idea of these cross-parking, cross-access, but there are easements that go across these properties.
That clears it up. But I like the rest of the commissioners, I like it a lot, and I know our Westmont Park District, their summer camps will go to this as one of their activities, so, you know, that says a lot about the business in itself. So I like it, so.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I do, too. As Craig said, I think this is a really good fit for that space. I am curious about trampolines. I mean, we did trampolines in grade school through high school, and, you know, all we had were spotters, you know, and we'd bounce all over the place. And I think at some point in the later years, school systems got rid of trampolines, insurance issues or something, but apparently, the company you represent is...
Yeah, now that sounds right. Everyone signs a waiver going in. You know, if there's, we were joking earlier, if there's ever an incident, it's usually adults, meaning, you know, get a little too excited. I remember, I used to be able to, and then it doesn't always work out. But they do a good job of separating the toddlers and older kids, too, just because, you know, it can get, people can be bouncing all over the place, so they do a good, they know their liabilities associated, so they plan it out pretty well.
Okay, well, good luck. Chair would entertain a motion to approve, PCC 0242023, request by Balsami Incorporated and SCP Westmont regarding the property 52 East Ogden for a special use permit for an amusement establishment in the B2 General Business District.
Motion to approve, Barry? Motion to approve, Barry?
Second, Van Buren.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Questions? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. There you have it, sir. Stay in touch with staff, and, uh, they'll get you scheduled with the Village Board.
Will do. Thank you all.
Good luck. Good night. Next item under new business, PCC 0282023, a request by the Main Lab petitioner and properties by AAA, the owner, regarding the property at 15 North Cass for the following. A special use permit request for a beauty parlor located on the ground floor in the B1 limited business district. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Um, my name is Danny Glover. I am the representative for the Main Lab at 15 North Cass, as the Commissioner mentioned. Um, this is a, a full-service salon, looking to relocate their existing proven business from Downers Grove into the downtown Westmont area. Pretty self-explained, sorry.
Sorry, did you need the presentation?
Oh, you want me? Oh, yeah. I didn't even, I didn't know if you got it. Perfect. Yeah, so, um, they, uh, they plan to be open Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., uh, and Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Again, offering all your typical salon services. They do plan to do some minor renovations to this space, cosmetic renovations, sorry. Nothing, um, nothing too drastic, not moving around any mechanicals or anything, um, but they do wanna do some on-trend, um, cosmetic improvements, uh, to the space. As you know, the space is built out for a salon, um, so should be fairly easy to do. It was recently built out that way. Um, and here's a couple pictures of some of their work that they do. Again, very reputable and established business. Obviously, they, uh, being a salon, it requires a special use in this, the downtown district. Having been built out for the full-service salon, obviously, that use was previously granted to previous tenants and other tenants of similar use, so we're hoping that, uh, this would be granted as well. Um, while, while it is a special use, I know the comprehensive plan does designate the property as a part of a mixed-use focusing on retail and pedestrian-intensive services, which I would imagine this is with, um, guys and gals hoping to, um, maybe visit some of those restaurants, uh, in your downtown that is growing, um, by the, by the day it seems. So, this kind of fits in with what the comprehen, the comprehensive plan designates. Um, they, uh, they have determined that the parking is adequate and no additional impact will be made on, on other services or facilities surrounding. Um, and we don't believe that there's any material differences between this, uh, special use application and any others previously approved, um, at this location or the surrounding areas. So, um, with that, I'll take any questions, if you have any?
Okay, thank you. Scott?
Thank you, Chair. Um, so this property is 15 North Cass Avenue, um, just right in our downtown, across the street. To the south of this is Dolce, um, and then this is the one directly north to it. So, the, the site itself contains a, a two-story commercial building, um, with commercial, a commercial space on the bottom floor, um, and then on the second floor, there's a dwelling space. So, the commercial space was previously occupied by originally Lush Inc., um, who secured an approved special use permit and a B1 development permit, um, in 2005. Later, another beauty parlor came in, Karma, um, and they occupy this space for a while. And currently, the space is unoccupied, and they've been unoccupied for a period of 180 consecutive days. So, that, that special use is, special use permit that was approved is now void. And now, the Main Lab needs to obtain this special use to, um, operate the beauty parlor on the ground floor. So, our zoning ordinance requires that all barber shops and beauty parlors that are located on the ground floor and are less than a thousand, or, and more than a thousand square feet, uh, require a special use permit. Uh, this particular space, I believe, is around 2,000 square feet. And in addition to, uh, the Main Lab looking to secure the special use, there's also a tenant in the rear.
Massage.
Yeah, it's a massage parlor, um, in the rear that has been there for, since Karma's been there.
Is that still open?
To my knowledge, it is still open. They operate on an appointment-based operation.
Through, through the rear entrance?
Correct. They are, will continue operation as far as staff knows, um, dependent on ownership change and other items.
So, it's just this room in the back?
Correct. They occupy a single room. They've always occupied the single room.
Oh.
Even when the other space, other, uh, beauty parlors were in there.
If I can chime in for a second. We, we found that, um, not just because of COVID, but it was, it was happening before COVID. A lot of these larger spaces, the landlords have tenants that approach them that don't need the whole space. So, another good example, I think, Al K Media has kind of leased out some of their space. So, we see a lot of these larger spaces with multiple tenants in them, and in this case, um, a massage parlor, which was approved with a massage license and a B1 through the board, so it didn't necessarily come through this group for approval, but got approval for that small back space, um, which, for now, will still be there. It'll have two tenants, um, for, for the time being.
That would be subject to an agreement with the new owner, would it not?
Yes, and I, I would imagine that there's a lease, and whoever owns the building has to navigate that lease, and whether the person stays or goes, it's a symbiotic relationship between these two businesses or not.
Just going back through my notes. Uh, so the, as the petitioner noted, the space is currently built out to house a beauty parlor. It has the chairs and everything like that currently there. And in addition to the special use permit that the commission's looking at, they're also requesting a B1 permit, development permit, that every business in the downtown must acquire, uh, in the B1 district specifically. The B1 permit is not to be looked at by this commission. It is specifically for the Village Board to look at, um, and to, to look at, uh, the use and how it relates to the other uses in the downtown. So, the commission, this commission doesn't look at that specifically. We just look at the special use permit and the special use standards that we've listed out dozens of times. And then, uh, that's all I have for this specific item. I'm open to any questions.
So, I just want, so basically, what happens on many of these projects that have approvals outside of planning and zoning, um, so we'll see this on Platts, um, and some other types of approvals. The B1, basically, once a recommendation is given by this commission, we then modify our staff report, um, to say, oh, there's one more approval that's needed for the board, and that's basically, we tack it on as one more thing the board gets to discuss, so. Just, just to highlight what Scott was saying.
Yeah, those are always tied together when they come through.
So, so on our staff reports, what Scott was trying to do is express that there is another piece of approval that happens outside of, of the commission, so.
Thank you. Okay, anybody from the public?
Is he done?
Sir, please. You don't have to sign in this time.
I just had a couple of questions. It's gonna be a full-service.
Address your questions to the.
Rick Martin.
To, to the commission.
We have a question for you yet.
It's the way we do it.
Making sure I understand, all right? Downers Grove, the Westmont full-service, uh, the Main Lab. Um, question is, where is all the parking going to be for the employees and the patients? Patients, customers?
Good question. Sir?
I have the same situation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're next door. Um, so, there is parking behind it that I, I'm sure you know is overgrown with.
I do.
Bushes and debris that we do plan to, um, clean up and create, um, parking back there for the staff. Um, and then, um, I believe in the downtown, there's, I'm not sure how many spaces that are, are able to be used for public use, but, um, I'm sure staff.
Yeah, so, we do, as we've talked about in the, uh, B1 district, um, recently, in recent past, I believe it was 2020 when a text minute went through, um, and as noted in the staff report, no additional parking is required for new use coming in, um, in the B1 district specifically in the downtown. Um, they do have a gravel, uh, gravel area in the rear, um, that they've seen parking on. It's not striped or anything like that. So, they, they're, I believe, welcome to use it as it currently stands, but if you wanted to pave it or anything, you'd have to come back in.
Right, right, yeah. No, I know it's planning to get cleaned up for sure right away.
Right, well, and I think the concern was, you have employee parking.
Into the microphone, please.
You have employee parking on where the employees are gonna park for you all, and then where the customers are gonna park. They're not gonna park them back. And then you have the parking lot, which is there at this point in time, okay? We don't know for how long until the building starts to the south there. But, on the other side of the street, behind, um, the other beauty parlor, there's a big parking lot for that. So, again, hopefully, this would work for everybody, but as long as they are directly over there and can still walk back across the street and get your haircut over by you. That was my, you know, main concern, you know, cause that west parking lot isn't gonna be there anymore. Not for long. Well, a couple of years.
Which brings up a question. I could insert it this time. I see the Toon building has, has been demolished. Is the Toon parking lot still usable for, that's not?
Um, the, the Toon parking lot was just overseated, so you're gonna see it with grass.
What was the other parking? That was the other funeral.
And the, currently.
Well, yes, but.
Currently, there are no plans to expand the, the adjacent parking lot onto that, so. But if, if there were plans, that would be a capital improvement project through Public Works, so.
But, but that Toon parking lot still exists?
Just a clarification.
The parking lot next to Toon, that was always village-owned, is still there, yes.
Yeah, that, I think that that's a big misnomer, that that was the Toon lot. That's always been the village lot there, that, that we've.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Rick. Good question. Anything else?
And you're just gonna keep that apartment upstairs with whoever's there? You have no control on that, I presume?
Yeah, so, the, the apartment is still in, uh, uh, existing lease through next year. Um, and also, I just wanted to correct one thing. So, the, the massage, um, uh, place in there now, I believe it's Lima.
Lima, yeah. Lima, Lima.
Their lease has ended.
They have.
Um, so, will just be one tenant in there. Whether they work out something with her to like, I, I don't believe that that's in the plans, but that lease has ended, so they'll be starting from scratch right away. Yeah, so.
Last question. How many gals or people are you gonna have cutting hair in Toon here or whatever?
Um, I, I would imagine, um, that there's probably gonna be at any point in time, two to four gals, um, cutting hair at one time, um, and possibly a massage person in the back there. It is appointment-based, so you shouldn't expect too many customers at one time. No one's gonna be like, waiting, so everyone has a pre-planned appointment, probably lasts about an hour, hour and a half, so.
And you're gonna keep both the shops open? Or move it all over here? Cause you have the one in Downers.
Oh, no, no, that one, their, 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 their lease is up there, too. They're on a month-to-month there.
All right, good. So, it'll be all my ass?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Rick. Thanks, sir. Uh, let's go to the Commissioners. Commissioner Peterson, would you start?
Thank you. Um, I have no questions or comments.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas?
Seems like a fit. It's already pre-destructed for, for that purpose and that, and, uh, welcome.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry?
I agree. It's, it's been that a few times. I know, again, you know, this is one part of it for, for you guys to go. I, I just questioned Danny, how do they let you in Downers Grove bring businesses from Downers to Westmont? Isn't that against, uh, some kind of bylaw there or something like that, or?
Well, yeah. No, it, it was the, the spot that they chose, um, so I'm not the business owner, I'm a representative of the business, um, and I found the space for them, and they asked me to be here tonight to, uh, present to you guys. Um, but you guys have a, a great downtown area that's growing and got a lot of exciting things going on, so I think a lot more businesses are gonna be attracted here soon, and I think they recognized it now and are excited, uh, to be a part of it.
Well, we appreciate him coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yeah, I'm, uh, I'm supportive. I don't have any questions or comments.
Same here. I guess my.
Do I exist anymore?
I apologize, sir. I think of you as the boss.
Yeah, I was, holy, did he miss you the first time, too?
Did I miss you the last time around?
Yeah.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Um, you say that this is a business that's moving, so it has an established clientele, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. No, I, I too am in agreement with it, whole concept, and good luck to him.
Good, thank you.
As we found with your competitor across the street, the Ali Rose, uh, they brought a lot of customers with them, uh, when they relocated here, so.
Yeah.
Anybody else, any other questions? Then the Chair is, uh, would accept a, uh, motion to approve this, uh, PCC 0282023, request by the Main Lab and properties by AAA, regarding the property of 15 North Cass, special use permit request for a beauty parlor located on ground floor B1 limited business district.
So moved, Barry?
I'll second.
Second, Lavoy. Have a, uh, motion and a second. Maybe we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Barry?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, there you have it. Uh, stay in touch with the staff, and you'll be scheduled to go before the, uh, the Village Board, uh, for their decision.
Wonderful. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and good night. Next item under miscellaneous, uh, general update, uh, first zoning ordinance update, the assessment and project, uh, direction report by Duncan Associates. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Kirk Bishop with Duncan Associates. Uh, happy to be here tonight. Thank you for, uh, the opportunity to give you, uh, just a little bit of a reminder about this, uh, what this zoning ordinance, uh, update project, uh, will entail and some of the general objectives, and to share with you some of our initial thoughts about, uh, the direction we might wanna take, um, as we begin here in the next few weeks, uh, actual work on the updated ordinance. It's fighting me. It's fighting you. There you go.
There you go. Thank you, Scott. Uh, so, again, tonight, uh, just a, just a little bit about, uh, reintroduction of the project. I know in the past months, as the Village was, uh, deliberating on whether to proceed with this project, you were probably all involved in some of the discussion. But, uh, for the most part, tonight we'll focus on, on this, what we're calling the project direction report, which is a very kind of high-level, broadly-framed, uh, set of ideas for the type of changes we might wanna pursue. By no means the entirety of the substantive modifications and other improvements we'll wanna propose to the ordinance, um, but, uh, at least provide a starting point for this ordinance update, and hopefully spur some questions and observations and thoughts that we welcome from you all about the types of things you wanna see, um, in the ordinance update. Just in terms of general objectives, uh, high-level, again, for what we might wanna achieve with the ordinance update, um, bringing the, uh, you know, it's been, oh, four decades plus, 45 years since the last comprehensive overhaul, overhaul of the zoning ordinance. So, many of the bones of the existing ordinance go back, you know, you know, decades.
So many of the bones of the existing ordinance go back, you know, decades, and reflect a different time in the village's evolution, and reflect a different times in terms of economic development objectives and community character and the type of buildings and development that the village sees in 2023 and beyond versus the late 1970s, when this ordinance was last overhauled. So we want to bring the ordinance, modernize the ordinance, and ensure that it's well-aligned with the village's land use policies, development policies, of course, including the comprehensive plan and some of the other kind of special studies, design guidelines and so forth, that have been adopted in, in the interim between the last comprehensive overhaul and today. We'll want to ensure, as with any type of project like this, that the ordinance provisions of the zoning ordinance are consistent with other elements and sections and articles of the Village Code, making sure those are consistent, not, not redundant, or not internally in conflict. And, and of course, we'll want to include provisions that are, you know, protect the village in terms of ensuring that the ordinance meets legal muster. Want to, of course, ensure with any kind of ordinance like this that it's consistent with the village's overall economic development objectives and the type of development you see in today's modern world, in terms of a lot of, as we witnessed tonight, a lot of reuse of existing buildings, redevelopment of existing sites. There aren't a lot of greenfield vacant sites within the village, and so we need to have an ordinance that's conducive to the type of infill redevelopment and economic developments of the village. And we think there's also an opportunity, as we reorganize, reformat the ordinance, to make it easier to use and navigate and understand and find the information that we want when we're looking for the type of code provisions that might affect a project and the types of approvals that will be required. So we've been the village's consultant now for a few months, and we've had an opportunity to do a few things, but we're, we're just now at the sort of turning point to actually start working on the ordinance. To date, we've had an opportunity to sit down and have some extensive discussions with staff. They've, they've been really great in terms of sharing with us their observations and their kind of frustrations with some provisions of the ordinance that could be clearer or that could work better in terms of administration and enforcement of the ordinance. We've worked with staff to begin to talk about how we'll ensure that this ordinance update effort is well-communicated to the public and that there are opportunities for people to participate throughout the process and share their input and be made aware of the project. We've held a few weeks ago, some small group listening sessions with property owners, developers, chamber representatives, economic development representatives, to get their kind of early sense of some of their priorities or their hopes for what we might accomplish as part of this effort. And then, of course, we prepared the project direction report that I, I think is part of your pack that I hope you've had an opportunity to, or will have an opportunity to kind of dive into that. And then tonight's presentation, which kind of puts us, again, right at the starting point of the phase of the project that will involve the preparation of the initial sort of internal review draft. I'm, I'm expecting that we'll have an opportunity, certainly working with staff, to go over our initial draft, will provide you with some updates. Once we have that initial draft, our kind of best foot forward in terms of a, an initial draft, we'll, we'll enter a public review phase of the project, where we'll hold some open houses or workshops to, to help educate folks about the type of changes that are proposed and answer any questions that that, they may have about the overall nature of the project. And then after we've done that sort of informal public review stage and have that solid second draft, we'll enter the public hearing and adoption phase of the project, and of course be back before you for a recommendation and before the Village Board for hopeful ultimate adoption of the ordinance, which we put, our estimate is that we would be, I think about this time next year, kind of ready to begin that formal adoption process. So the report itself is organized in, in kind of three key areas. We talk a bit at the beginning about some organization and format, formatting changes we might want to make to the ordinance. Then we've got a pretty significant middle section of the report that just begins to plant the seed in terms of some of the more substantive changes that we might want to make to certain ordinance provisions. And again, it's, it's not highly detailed, we haven't begun to prepare the ordinance, so there will undoubtedly be other substantive modifications that are included in the initial draft, and we will make sure that those are highlighted for you so that you know exactly what's changed when you're back, when the ordinance is back before you for any recommendations for adoption. And then we have a kind of final section of the report that, that focuses in on downtown, which we think is a really important part of this project. So again, we anticipate that the ordinance will be kind of taken apart and reorganized to kind of present the information in a, in a way that's maybe easier for folks to find the information that they need, elevating certain provisions that are now kind of nested within kind of general provisions articles, so that they kind of percolate to the top in terms of the table of contents, so you're able to, you know, quickly find the information you want with regard to landscaping or wireless telecommunications facilities, provisions that are now sometimes kind of nested deeper down in the, in the organization of the ordinance, and we find that to be a way to make it easier for people to use. Will, your ordinance includes a number of, I think, helpful tables now. We'll continue that practice and look for other opportunities to present information in tables that make it easy to compare and, and contrast regulations that apply in different areas of the village. We'll want to make sure that the ordinance includes illustrations to help explain the sometimes, sometimes confusing words on the page, sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words in terms of presenting sometimes sophisticated or complex regulatory concepts with images as opposed to just words. And then just in terms of the basic layout and page formatting and navigational tools within the ordinance, hyperlinks, so that one is as needed when cross-references and things like that occur, that it's easy to sort of jump from one section to another without paging through lots of pages of the ordinance. In terms of substantive provisions, the kinds of things that we've been talking about, I'll just kind of generally describe to you. As we look at the existing zoning map and the, and the districts, we see that there may be some opportunities to consolidate or eliminate some classifications that are very similar in nature. One of the things that we talked about with staff was looking at the, the larger lot residential zones, R1, R2, R1, R1A, and R2, as well as the R3 zones. Very little of that zoning on the map today presents at least the opportunity to ask ourselves, do we need four relatively large lot residential classifications that have very, other than the minimum lot size requirement for these single-family residential zones? Do we really need these three or four classifications? Could we kind of compress those into one general classification, residential, single-family classification? When we look at the B3 district, the Hilton Resort property on the northeast side of the village, it's a very specialized zoning district today. We're hopeful that we can kind of relook at that district and see if it could make it a little easier to use and, and better integrated within to the, into the overall ordinance itself. Plan development provisions, which are, have been kind of frequently used, particularly in the area of downtown that we're in right now, maybe look at the process that applies to the plan development, or what some communities call planned unit development provisions, to clarify the approval process and to make that a kind of two-step approval process with a basic concept plan and then a more detailed final plan. That's something we'll want to talk about going forward. The creation of a zoning district that is focused on public and civic and institutional uses, like schools and churches and kinds of, those kinds of institutional uses. Currently, those use, types of uses are permitted or special uses in residential and other business and commercial zones, which is a fine approach, but sometimes it's nice to have on the map a clear indication that this property is, is special. It's not necessarily residential, so that can be a, a strong and transparent signal for people who are looking at the zoning map. So we'll, we'll likely propose the creation of one or more, maybe one for parks and one for kind of building-type uses. And then as we look forward into the potential annexation of the Liberty Park area, I think one of the things that the staff has charged us with is kind of thinking about if, if that annexation were to proceed in the future, what would, what kind of zoning district would be appropriate, because that area is a little bit different than other areas of the village in terms of lot sizes and the types of activities and the types of issues that exist in that area. So we're prepared to help assist with the preparation of a zoning district for that area. The, also an opportunity as part of this update to, to sort of better integrate some standards that exist outside of the zoning ordinance, namely the landscape and screening requirements that are codified in other chapters of the Village Code, some parking lot design standards that are currently, exist outside of the zoning ordinance but are very much zoning-related. So I think there'll be an opportunity to bring some of those kinds of provisions into the ordinance, make it a little bit easier to use, understand, and administer going forward. Parking, any ordinance, new ordinance is being prepared in today's day and age, I think takes a little bit different outlook with regard to parking, so we're going to see, see if there are opportunities to sort of build on some of the flexibility that's built into the B1 district, and see if maybe some of that flexibility with regard to existing buildings, shared park, shared parking relationships have applicability village-wide, and to sort of ensure that we're not requiring too much parking and thereby posing an obstacle for redevelopment and reuse of sites, even outside of downtown, all with the idea of balancing that objective with the ensuring that part, the negative impacts of inadequate parking don't spill over into, to neighborhood areas. I think the ordinance update also, in terms of processes, provides a good point for us to look at the existing approval processes, sort of create a, probably an article within the overall zoning ordinance that consolidates all the various approval processes, rezonings, text amendments, special uses, variances into one section of the ordinance with a set of common provisions with regard to, you know, the type of notices that are required and hearings and, and so forth. Present that in a series of flow charts that are easy for folks who aren't zoning experts who'll know how, what the process is going to be like, who they're going to be speaking with, and who has ultimate approval authority for those, those types of things, which can be confusing for folks who, again, come in, come into contact with zoning, you know, infrequently. As part of that, looking at the administrative and procedural provisions, I think this is an opportunity to clarify some of the site plan review procedures, what types of projects are subject to site plan review, are there types of projects that can be approved at a, at a lower level and not go all the way through planning and zoning and Village Board? Are there some minor types of activities that can be approved at the staff level? I think we'll also want to try and clarify, after a site plan is approved, is, are there, is there a certain universe of minor changes that can be approved without going back through the entire process? Are typically things that we'll want to do as part of that. And then I know there are a number of provisions in the ordinance that have been amended over time, the non-conforming provisions are, are an example, and those look to us to be really solid. I think they're, the only question we really had about those is, would there be a desire in the village to build a little bit of flexibility in so that the Planning and Zoning Commissioner Village Board could, could allow for expansions of non-conformities or changes to non-conformities through a kind of special exception or other type of process? Would be the only question that we've thought about in terms of non-conformities at this point. And then finally, the consideration of a kind of different approach to zoning for the downtown area. In 2015, I think, the village adopted a set of commercial design guidelines, some of which focus on the downtown area. That, those, those design guidelines identified kind of different areas of the downtown, a kind of core area, right where we're sitting, kind of focused around the, the station area here, along Cass, and then branching out just a bit along Burlington and Quincy here, that the plant, the design guidelines call the core area, the kind of most walkable mixed use kind of area, and then radiating from that core area where we're sitting, along those spines, a kind of more supportive area, or I think what the plan calls edge areas of downtown. So we're thinking that it may be appropriate to, to kind of break the existing B1 district into a couple of sub-districts, a core and edge-type sub-district, with maybe different permitted uses in the core district as opposed to the edge, maybe different development standards within those areas. But most importantly, when it comes to downtown, the projects are currently reviewed against a set of design guidelines that are, that don't rely heavily on clear, objective criteria, but rely more on terms like is compatible with, or, you know, in keeping with the nature of this area. We think if there's a way to sort of bring those general kind of vague criteria into more focus through some, you know, objective criteria that could be applied through plan review within the downtown area. We think there's also an opportunity to step back and ask ourselves, do we still need, was referenced earlier tonight, the B1 development permit? Projects are being reviewed through site plan review, they're getting a special, special use approval in many cases, and then as we heard tonight, projects within the downtown area have to also undergo the B1 permit process whereby the Village Board determines if the use is in keeping with the nature of the use framework that, that is desired within the village. We think that it's been, been a while since the B1 permit has been in place. We may be able to build on that experience and say, we now have a better handle on the types of uses that are appropriate within this walkable mixed-use downtown that's, that as we've heard multiple times tonight, is, is really vibrant and really a special place, and we want to make that, you know, we want to ensure going forward that it maintains that vibrancy, but we also want to make it an easy place for folks to invest by reusing existing buildings and new businesses coming in. So we think that this type of downtown zoning that we're thinking about could, could help do that, do that. And I should mention as well, beyond the sort of B1, the existing B1 areas, there are also these areas to east and west along Quincy and Burlington that are currently largely zoned in the R5 classification, which is a classification that's not really specific to downtown, and I don't think reflects the type of building scale and density that may be appropriate in this area as opposed to R5 areas elsewhere in the village. And so we're thinking maybe, you know, maybe a more downtown-specific residential support classification, or breaking the R5 into a kind of downtown version versus a elsewhere-in-the-village version. So some of the ideas that we've talked about there. I've also included in the report, and I won't, I won't dive into the weeds, but some of the. I've also included in the report, and I won't dive into the weeds, but some of the, I mentioned earlier that we conducted some listening sessions with folks, kind of people who are pretty familiar with the village's existing zoning ordinance, and we got a fair amount of feedback, some of which pertain to zoning in particular, others that kind of lie outside of the realm of zoning, like stormwater-type requirements, fire code requirements, and those types of things that, for the average person on the street, sound like zoning but really aren't zoning, but we just wanted to give you an accurate summary of the types of issues that we were hearing, and so that, as we move forward with this project, there may be an opportunity for the village to think about other ways in which existing regulations can, could be modified to achieve the sorts of objectives that I mentioned at the beginning of the project. So, with that, I'll step back and happy to answer any questions, talk to you about questions you have about the process going forward, and look forward to working with you all.
How long has Duncan been on this?
On this project?
I think our contract was approved in May, I think, operated from memory, but that sounds about right.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I don't know if everyone at this commission is familiar with all the processes that have happened, but the village did go through an RFP process, interviewed multiple consultants, and really gave the consultants, you know, kind of what we knew was broken in our zoning ordinance. So, it was 1979, the last time the comprehensive, last readoption of the zoning ordinance was done, and since 1979, we've done fixes. So, whenever you see a text amendment that comes through, sometimes it's a fix, sometimes it's, you know, something that's new that the code didn't anticipate, but over time, it makes a very disjointed code. So, staff for many years has known it needed to be reassessed, and I'm not going to say rewritten, I'm not going to say completely readopted. There are many pieces of our code that we're not going to necessarily change, we might make it more user-friendly, but we're not necessarily examining all the setbacks in every district. But staff has worked with Kirk and Duncan Associates since we brought them on to say, here are the things we know that we get caught up on. So, some of those things that we get caught up on is, you know, our downtown development. So, I don't know how many folks on this commission were here when Quincy Station was approved, but that had a laundry list of variances and exceptions that they needed. In a perfect world, our zoning ordinance would have said, for a mixed-use development like this, it's a maximum of 50 feet tall and five stories and a setback of a certain type, and so much retail on the first floor. Our codes don't go that specific. So, what happens is those projects come before this commission, and they basically say, this is what we want. And it's very hard for this commission to say, yeah, but, you know, our zoning height maximum is 40, which is really low, but what's right? This is an opportunity for us to discuss what right is and then codify it, so the next time that project comes before us, we say, wait a minute, you're asking for 80 feet. We've debated this when we did our zoning ordinance, and we said 60, and we're going to hold you to 60, versus someone coming in and saying, I want 80. What do you think of that? So, this is really a great opportunity. In fact, our 2013 comp plan, which we know is outdated by this time, in 2013, it said, next step, rewrite your zoning ordinance. We're just now getting to that. We've been working with Kirk, a lot of the things that he's brought forth is based on our input in some of those listening sessions. This will be a year-long process, we will talk about a lot of it. The goal is that by the time we're moving to adoption, we're all behind it, that we like the changes that we're instituting, and then you will hear staff say, once we adopt that new ordinance, we kind of have to stick to it. Now, no new ordinance is perfect, but if we say, I'll use that example of 60 feet, if we say 60 is what we want, and a week later, someone comes before us and says, I want 80, we should be saying, well, we worked really hard, we believe in our code, we don't necessarily want to revisit that with your first project. Because our code's been so broken for so long, we get a lot of those projects that we acknowledge our code is broken, and we entertain that request. So, basically, once we work really hard to get our code right, we want to do our best to stick to it, until we figure out it's broken, but that's much further down the line. So, as we get to that adoption stage, you're going to hear staff reiterate the, you know, we're going to go back through the variants and special use approvals and say, well, did they meet the test of the variants? Because now that we have new code, we're setting new precedent if we say yes to a variance. Do we want to say that new precedent? So, a recent thing that came before us was garage size on large lots, and I believe that a lot of folks may have said, well, the large lot is not unique, but it seems like our code, when you have a large lot, maybe should afford those large lots a bigger garage. Those are the kinds of things we're looking at. So, once we make that decision, if we say, well, it can be X number of square feet bigger, then we want to kind of hold to our decisions when those requests come before us. So, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to steal your thunder, I'm just trying to let the commission know that staff's been working with you for so, sometime, we examined a lot of other consultants, and we liked what this consultant had to say about particularly our downtown and how our downtown can develop, and we're very happy to be working with Kirk. He's done a lot of local work, Oak Park, Downers Grove, a lot of very relevant and comparable communities. That was part of the evaluation that we made with the consultants is, how well do you know Westmont? And how well do you know what the area that Westmont's in?
Thanks, Joe. Any other commissioner comments or questions?
Just one question, what is the cost to the taxpayers for something like this?
I can answer that. $90,000 was budgeted, and I believe that is right around, it's very, actually, I believe much more than 90 was budgeted, I want to say it was closer, I don't have that number in front of me, but it was much higher than that. I believe the contract is right around that. So, part of the evaluation of the consultants was also looking at the bids, and was it reasonable for the services provided?
Thank you.
Nobody else? Well, thank you very much, Kirk, that was a lot of material.
I love it. I personally think, not everything I saw, I necessarily agreed with, but overall, I think it'll be fantastic.
Well, we're going to do our best to ensure that you feel that way as we come back to you, so we look forward to working with you and the citizens of the village, and see you again sometime soon.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
If you read all this, that in the next last page, the discussion of the R5 zoning district, that's Burlington and Quincy on both sides of Cass, and I think there is a lot of potential in both directions for the future, that as things stand right now, can't, but perhaps could, as one of the examples. Before we get to adjournment, first of all, that next meeting will be the second, the second Wednesday of October, the 11th. Also, today, Commissioner Peterson and I went to the Illinois Planning Association Conference in Naperville, and it was very, I think, I've been to five or six of these, and I think this is, I consider it the best one, primarily because there were 19 different planning commissioners all day long today, that, and virtually everyone in the entire group was very active with comments and questions, and what they were doing in their communities, and the issues they faced and how they dealt with it, and I think it was very valuable, and I think Commissioner Peterson agrees.
Yeah, it was awesome. I think it should be like a required, required, for people on the Planning and Zoning Commission, you get so much information, it's unbelievable.
We spent an hour deep diving into findings of fact, and how and why, and the around and back and in and out, and that was just one example of, wow, there were some really sharp people in that room, too.
So, every year, we budget for each one of you, if you want to go to that. Now, your experience today was you got to hear from other folks and other commissioners in other communities, and then at the tail end of the training, planners were allowed to come in and be a part of the fun, and I say part of the fun because we had a mock But APA, American Planning Association, also does offer that training service to come to us. Now, it's a different type of environment because you don't have 19 different points of view, but I believe that as staff, once we adopt a new zoning ordinance, and we want to reaffirm, well, we don't want to just start handing out variances with our new zoning ordinance, that's the time that I think staff will be consulting with this group and saying, do we want to bring in APA to go over some of the logistics and legalities, and when someone comes and asks us for an exception, because that's what a variance is, they're saying, we don't want to meet your rules, but we worked very hard on our rules, why don't you want to meet those? And then, there is a special list of exceptions that then allow us, allow the commission to say, well, you can break the rule because you let exception free. Bringing in that organization, once we've reaffirmed our code, would be good for this group, and that is something that you will see staff offering. But every year, APA puts on a conference, we are willing to, there's a one-day plan commissioner session, but also, I usually extend, we get a discounted rate if any plan commissioner wants to go for the three days or one day. I'm usually in those sessions, I think I sat in three sessions on electric vehicle charging stations, I'm more educated on that. But sometimes there are topics that are very relevant to stuff that comes before us here. I believe last year, there was Bill Durant, which we know is one of the cases that we have come back before us again and again, and so there was education on that. So, it is an opportunity for education, not only on the procedures of how the meetings work, but also on interesting topics. So, next year, when I offer, I encourage everyone to, you know, make the leap if you want to. It's usually, you know, a good networking opportunity, you know, have lunch with people, and kind of see the absolutely boring side of planning that Scott and I do every day, but in a less boring light, so.
I don't think it's that boring.
I thank the village and the taxpayers for the $75 they spent on my, and the free lunch I got, sandwich.
And not to mention, like, and then you got a little tour of Naperville's projects of, hey, we've done this, and this is what worked, and this is what didn't, and then you can bring that back as part of your experience of, you know what, I saw something in Naperville, Joe, why don't we get something like that? And then you poke me a little bit, and that helps guide me as I'm working with developers, so.
But several years ago, the conference was in Naperville, and Greg Pill and I went, and one of the, one of the things in the conference, we went to the village of Wheaton, and their Chamber of Commerce gave us a tour and told us how they went through the 1970s and 1980s, spinning their wheels, attempting to help their businesses that had empty storefronts downtown, and, oh, we'd help them with an awning project to dress up downtown, but they still had the empty fronts. He said, when they started approving high-density.
Residential.
Residential downtown, they build up a population in the downtown, that took care of the business, the storefronts filled, what the best thing that a village can do for their B1 businesses is more population closer in. And now it appears we're on our way to more and more of that. Anybody else have anything else? Then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second, Thomas.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Sorry.
This meeting is adjourned.